Commissioner Jeffrey?
Here.
Commissioner Sherman?
Here.
Vice Chair Hoff?
Here.
Commissioners Flores, Martin, and Donaldson have excused absences this evening, so we have a quorum of four members of the commission tonight.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Before we take public comment, I'd like to announce that the item Public Hearing, Green Building, will not be heard tonight. It's going to be postponed till a future meeting. So I'm sorry if anybody is here for that item, but we will not be discussing that this evening. Are there any public comments, anybody in the public that wish to discuss something not on the agenda? If so, please come forward. Hearing none, we'll move on. The next item is Action Recap. There are two action recaps for April 23rd. One was the Special Meeting of Ethics, and the other was the Regular Meeting of April 23rd. Are there any comments or corrections from the Commissioners?
Move to approve.
Second.
Without exception, they are approved. The next item is the Director's Report. Charlie?
Okay, thank you. First, with regard to recent actions of the City Council, they have met twice since your last meeting. They met on May 5th and on May 19th. There were no planning-related items on their May 5th agenda. On May 19th, they considered the Emory Station-Greenway project. As you know, the Commission approved that on January 22nd, and your approval was appealed by residents of Elevation 22. On May 19th, the Council considered this appeal, and they denied the appeal and approved the project with modified conditions related to noise and light attenuation. At the same meeting, the Redevelopment Agency approved an owner-participation agreement, and under this OPA, the agency will provide funding for noise baffling for the new Emory Station-Greenway building, and Wareham has agreed to spend a like amount of money on noise baffling on the roof of the adjacent Emory Station East building. So hopefully, this will take care of all the noise issues we've had in that area. Also, on May 19th, the Council approved a contract with MIG for the Parks and Recreation Strategic Plan, so that effort will be getting underway shortly. And they discussed the Urban Forestry Ordinance. They gave direction to staff on proposed changes to this ordinance. There were a number of changes that they directed staff to draft in revisions to the ordinance. Among other things, something that you will be interested in is they directed amendment to the ordinance so that in the future, all tree-removal permits will be considered by the Planning Commission. That's typically the case now anyway, because most tree-removal permits are associated with development projects that come before you. But in the future, all tree-removal permits would come before the Commission. That is, assuming that amendment to the ordinance is passed. With regard to the General Plan Update, I'm pleased to announce that the Draft Environmental Impact Report was published on Friday, May 15th. Here it is. You all should have received a copy of it. It is out now for a 45-day public comment period that ends on Tuesday, June 30th. The Commission will be holding a public hearing to receive comments on the draft EIR at your next meeting on Thursday, June 25th. We also have a limited number of additional printed copies, as well as CDs, of this document available. It's also available on our website, where it can be downloaded. The General Plan Update Steering Committee will be meeting again in about a week and a half, on Tuesday, June 9th, starting at 6:30 PM here in the Council Chambers. This will be their last look at the draft general plan, and they are then expected to recommend forwarding it to the Planning Commission and City Council for adoption. The final EIR will be prepared in July, and the draft general plan will be coming back to the Commission for consideration in August, and to the City Council for adoption in September. Meanwhile, work on the zoning ordinance update is continuing. The first module of that will be reviewed by the General Plan and Zoning Update Steering Committee on July 28th. And also, meanwhile, the housing element is moving ahead. As you know, you approved it at your last meeting. It's now scheduled to be adopted by the City Council on June 16th, in time to meet the state's June 30th deadline. And finally, I just want to mention that Commissioner Jeffrey, General Plan Project Manager Deborah Diamond, and myself attended the National American Planning Association Planning Conference in Minneapolis that was held April 25th through the 29th. There is a pretty complete description of it in our department's April Progress Report, which I believe you all should have received copies of, and I'd be happy to discuss details of it further with anyone who's interested. That concludes my report. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Are there any questions for the Director? Okay. In deference to the people who came late, I'd like to inform you that we will not be hearing the Green Building item tonight, so if you came for that meeting, I just want to let you know that it will not be on the agenda. With that said, we will go into our study session, and the item is the Emoryville Center for Community Life. And Maru, you're going to make the presentation.
Good evening, Vice Chair Hoff and members of the Commission. Today, this is a study session about the Emoryville Center of Community Life. A little bit of a background, for several years, the city and the school district have been planning for a new multipurpose, multi-generational facility to serve educational, community services, arts, and recreation programs, and that's been known as the Center of Community Life. Several sites have been considered in the past, including the AC Transit, as well as the PG&E site. At this point, the site that has been selected is the current site of Emory Secondary School, which is located on San Pablo Avenue between 47th Street and 53rd Street. Our master plan was developed on this 7.6-acre site, and that's what we are here to study today. The master plan provides space for all school grades, from K to high school grade 12. Recreation activities, which are currently housed in the recreation centers, would be housed on this site, and the existing senior center and child development center will remain, but some of the functions will be relocated onto this site. The new facility will be about 180 square feet, and they are divided up in various functions, as you can see on the slide. Essentially, the bulk, about 38%, 39% of the space will go to K to 12-grade space. Just to go back, in terms of what is going to stay, the swimming pool and the gym, the existing gym, will remain, although the buildings on the site will be demolished. And the field that you see that exists today will also be reconfigured, and you'll see that in a minute. So this is the proposed site plan. To just get your bearings, you've got San Pablo here, 47th Street, and 53rd Street. The individual buildings are clustered around this oval courtyard, and then you have basically four main buildings. You've got the green, the purple, the yellow, and this is the existing building here. The main entry to the site, the main grand entry to the facility, will be on San Pablo Avenue. There'll be additional pedestrian entries on 53rd right here, and 47th Street right here. In terms of the ground-level plan, the building fronting San Pablo will house basically community services. The building facing 53rd Street will be housing K to 6 classes. This is the administration building on the second level, on the first level, and you have, like I said, the gym and locker space, and of course, the pool. At the second level, the building that faces San Pablo will have classrooms from grade 7 to 12. The building facing 53rd will have additional classrooms from K to 6, I believe. This area here is basically arts and performance building, where on the first level, you have a kitchen and recreational rooms, and on the second level, it's kind of like a banquet or, again, multipurpose rooms. The building facing 47th Street will house library on the second level. And as you can see, these buildings are connected with each other on these walkways right here. At the third level, you have, the building facing San Pablo will have additional classrooms from 7 to 12. The building facing 53rd Street will have a roof terrace and a play yard for children from K to 6, and there'll be arts area on this building right here. There are some green elements to the building that are being contemplated, a green roof for this building right here, solar panels on the gym on 47th Street. In terms of future, what is anticipated, the building on San Pablo Avenue may have a fourth story to accommodate more classroom space. It's also possible that building facing 53rd Street would have a third level of classroom space, in which case, there would be rooftop play yard on the fourth level. So this would be the full build-out.
Maru, would the future expansion be contingent upon reaching the 1,200 student enrollment, or would this be in addition to 1,200 students?
I don't know that. I think Roy will be able to answer that question. In terms of parking, the majority of the parking is anticipated to be street parking. Essentially, along 47th Street, there's about a little over 100 parking spaces. There would also be drop-off zones for the high school right here, and for the K to 6 right here. Total, they are also anticipating perhaps an underground parking structure, which would hold about 79, 80 spaces. This is an option which is under consideration. It may change as a result of further studies, and also, of course, funding options. These are some of the renderings. This is what the 53rd Street would look like. This is kind of the plaza area. This is the entrance on San Pablo, and you can see the walkways. This is the building which will primarily hold the high school on the upper levels and community service on the lower level, and this is the administration building. In terms of conformity to land use policies, it is anticipated that the draft general plan that we have today will be in effect at the time when this project comes for approvals to the Commission. And so, I have examined the proposals conformity to that draft general plan with the assumption that what's in the plan today will be approved later on. So this site is designated as public in the draft general plan, and all the proposed users are allowed under this used land use category. In terms of floor area, the draft general plan anticipates it to be 1.5, which can be increased to 2, provided certain community goals are satisfied. The proposed is .54, which is well under the requirements. In terms of height, the draft general plan anticipates the site to be 30 feet, which can be increased to 55 feet, again, as long as certain community goals are satisfied. The proposed is two to three floors, with a future expansion to a fourth floor. Since this is a community facility, we staff does not anticipate that the bonus or the community goals that a facility needs to satisfy in order to get the higher height would be an issue. In terms of parking, that has not yet been determined, either in the general plan or the zoning update that will take place. So what we anticipate is going to happen in the interim for this proposal is that once more detailed plans and the programs are determined, parking studies would be done. As indicated in the staff report, a parking study was done for the program as outlined today, and that's where the numbers are coming from. But eventually, we anticipate that, you know, more detailed parking analysis would be done, and the parking spaces would be provided accordingly. In terms of environmental review, the Emory Unified School District will be the lead agency for the SEQA review. They will prepare an initial study that will determine whether a mitigated NECDAC or an EIR is needed. The MND or the EIR will need to be approved by the Commission as a responsible agency prior to the approval of the project. In terms of the community outreach so far, about 10 community presentations have been made between February and March of this year. Various comments and clarifications and questions have been summarized and attached to the staff reports. I won't go into it right now. The project was reviewed internally by staff in the DCC meeting held earlier this month. And the major concern that was expressed was sharing of common spaces between the high school and the elementary school students. Also, pedestrian safety issues for the street crossing on San Pablo was identified, something that needed to be analyzed and studied. There were also concerns regarding safety at the facility and availability of adequate parking. In terms of next steps, essentially, today, you are here, we are looking for your comment and direction on this master plan. The next thing that will happen is that this master plan will go to the Council for approval. And once that happens, an architect would be hired, and more detailed plans will be drawn up, and of course, they'll come back to the Commission, probably for another study session, and then eventually, for approvals. And the permits that you would be looking at are a use permit and design review. So that concludes my presentation. We do have Roy Miller from the school district, as well as Melinda Chin from staff.
Yeah, the Commissioners have any questions, Maru?
Yeah.
I have one question, Maru. According to this Fair Peers report, which was put on our desk here, it said the parking requirements would be 255 spaces.
Correct. And then, there should be also an email, an addendum to the parking study, which is also from Fair and Peers, where they revise it to 215.
Oh, okay. I didn't see that, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, yeah. And I apologize that these documents were not in your package.
If we could live with 215, would that preclude the need for underground parking?
That would not. As the program is today presented, it would still, yes.
Even with 215?
There are 80 spaces in the 79 underground parking.
How many?
79.
79 underground. Okay, thank you.
So I'm going to hand it over to Roy, and let me just...
Thank you.
Yeah, I got it, I got it. Just, just, yeah. And if you want, this is just the mouse, if you want to show it.
Good evening, Commissioners. First, I want to take a second to thank Charlie Bryant and Maru for making room in the Commission's busy schedule to see us and to see what we're doing with this project. And also, I want to thank Maru just for putting together a terrific staff report. In fact, I'm not sure I have a whole lot of additional detail to fill you in on. We did bring some slides. Melinda and I talked earlier and brought some additional slides that might be a little bit of additional descriptive material for you to consider. The basic diagram of the layout of the program on the site, the central notion is that there are all of these various interrelated programs surrounding a community commons. That was one of the kind of generative ideas that still lives in the final master plan version. I should also maybe briefly say that the master plan architects, Field Paoli and a group called HKIT, originally did four different layouts for how this facility could work on the Emory Secondary School site. Those were also reviewed at various community presentations. The Partners for Community Life held a discussion session at the senior center. Based on community input and based on our own working group thoughts about the project, we really focused on the plan, which has been developed, and the one that you see in the master plan now, which is this idea of collecting the program elements around, really, a series of outdoor spaces, making kind of outdoor rooms for community gatherings and also recreational use. I think the other thing that I'd like to show you that Maru didn't put up here before are a series of massing diagrams that I think give you some sense of the volumes involved in the project along 53rd, San Pablo, and 47th. These stack up floor by floor, so this is a ground plane, kind of first-floor volumes, adding the second layer, which Maru has already very well described in terms of program, third floor. And then, finally, and to Commissioner Jeffrey's question, the expansion phase. The original program going into the work with Field Paoli was about 200, just shy of 250,000 square feet. That program came from years of conversations in the community about desirable programs and the kinds of things that ought to exist in the center. We fairly quickly discovered that the full 250,000-square-foot program was two things. It was overly expensive and overly ambitious in terms of square footage for this site and just in general for the center. And we also discovered, in looking more carefully and in more detail, that it was more space than we actually needed. So one of the exercises that we went through with Field Paoli over a series of months was, how do we get the facility that we've really been aiming for, which is a facility that is multi-use function, in nearly every space? How do we achieve our goals for very little unused space for most of the time? I mean, the idea is that classrooms and every space on this whole site is used as often as possible. And we've discovered that in really kind of diving into that, we could pull the program back to the current configuration, which is about 180,000 square feet. The initial entering population, in terms of student numbers, will be about 800. In the program, as you see it without the expansion, that facility has the ability to grow in terms of student count by about, I'd say, 100 to 150 students. So this facility can take us from an 800-student set of school facilities up to around 950. Once that occurs, that then takes you to the threshold of having to think about expansion, and if the expansion were to occur, that would take the school district up to the final envisioned population of about 1,200 students. Timeline for that is fairly long. The school district's demographic studies show that the population of the school district could stay at the 800 to 950 level for another five to 10 years after the facility is actually in place. So an expansion phase is a very future kind of discussion. I think I also wanted to say one other thing, and Maru showed you the renderings. I like to tell people that the renderings are meant to be evocative, rather than descriptive of the facility. So in other words, we haven't jumped the design review process. You will actually see the schematic design for the work. That schematic design has yet to be produced. As Maru mentioned, we're in the process of hiring an architect through an RFP process. The schematic design phase for the project will occur through the end of this year. So it's likely to be early in 2010 that a schematic design for your design review would come back for your input. And I think, I'd also like to tell you that Melinda Chin and I have been working on this process with Field Paoli for the past almost year and a half now, and so she's sitting there silent, but has been very much a part of the whole series of conversations. So we're here and both available to answer questions.
Thank you. Any questions from the Commissioners?
Yeah, I have some questions.
Not yet.
I have some questions. If not yet, when?
I'd like to hear all the presentation.
Well, is there more presentation? That's it?
No, they're just available to respond to questions.
My question then has to do with compatibility and the conflict of the site, which was raised by many people in the questions you sent us, between the public and the school. And it seems to me there are three areas where this will occur. The library is to be used both by the public and by the students. The food facilities is both a cafeteria and a place for the public. And the recreation building. How do you plan to deal with avoiding this conflict between these various uses and the students?
And the security aspect of it.
Because right now, it's an open, unsecure campus, but I realize it's only an image, it's not the final design.
Correct.
But many of the comments have been directed at this very point.
That's the key, is we're looking at a master plan here, which doesn't necessarily show how fences are located, or where gates occur, or... But it does embody some important ideas, I think. And some of those ideas go like this. The separation for, in terms of student age groups...
Between students and students, you're talking about?
Separations between, you know, traditionally, there's a K6 kind of environment, or maybe even a K8 kind of environment. And then there's an upper-grade level environment, where it's either a kind of 7 through 12, as the district is now, or a 9 through 12, perhaps, in many districts. The master plan embodies some ideas of how those two populations coexist. On 53rd Street, we've focused the K through 6 students, and on 47th Street, we've focused the 9 through 12 students, or perhaps the 7 through 12 students. That at least creates two separate entries and two separate zones for the different-aged student groups. And once they're on the site, even the lobbies that welcome them into their school facilities, the ways that they circulate through the building, they're essentially separate paths. So these have been dealt with in terms of the way that the master plan has been thinking about how the school operates. In terms of the kind of public-school interface, I think some of those also are embodied in the master plan, and some of those have to be thought about in more kind of floor-plan detail. There are many communities that run double gymnasiums. Usually, one of them is the main gymnasium for the school population, at least during the active school hours, and one of them is dedicated to the community. I think that same sort of idea is in play here, which is why we're showing two gymnasiums. Maru said accurately that we're renovating and reusing one of the gyms, but there's also a brand-new, complete, additional gym being added. There will be separate locker rooms, and there will, again, be separate entrances and exits, one set of them dealing with PE and students, the other dealing with public. And in terms of your question about the library, I think the library is a piece of the puzzle that we're still very much studying. Exactly what the nature of the library is, and who uses it, and when they use it, that is a piece of the puzzle that is still being worked on and discussed.
Obviously, the public wants to use the library all day, and so do the students. You also have only one pool, and how are you going to have recreational facilities for the public?
Those kinds of things, like your question about food service, those kinds of things are going to be controlled by hours of use. The pool won't likely be available to students and seniors at the same moment. But that's what we're trying to accomplish. What we're trying to do is fully utilize the facilities that we have, and our belief is that with the proper set of facilities, there can... And our belief is that with the proper set of facilities, there can be hours of use for different age groups and, and different purposes within the facility. So for instance, the, it's true that there is a, a period of time every weekday when the food service facilities will be dominated by student use. But what, what happens after that? What happens traditionally in?
Let's take one specific example, instead of generalizing. The senior citizen center provides lunches for seniors, I assume, every day. The s- the students need lunches every day. How, how do you accomplish both of these goals with the same kitchen and dining room?
We, we can use the same kitchen, but we have separate dining rooms. This master plan envisions three multipurpose rooms. The two on the bottom floor will be for feeding the students. There's a third multipurpose room on the top floor, which will be for the public. So there'll be separate facilities for the different age groups. So all will be able to exist at the same time, but in different places, but they'll have the facilities available for them. As far as the swimming program, we currently operate a very successful program with the district now. The city runs the pool. We have lap swimming, we have senior swimming. All of those things take place in the morning. And then just this past spring, in the afternoon, the recreation department provides swimming lessons for the middle school, uh, students. And then in the afternoon, we have swimming lessons for the public, and the evening, we have lap swim again. So it's already working very successfully to have everyone exist in the facility.
And if I could amplify the idea of the kitchen, we're looking at the kitchen as being able to serve multiple groups throughout the week, and in addition, use it as a teaching venue. Because it's our conviction that if we had a great teaching kitchen, there would be plenty of people of all ages who would be interested in, in taking culinary classes.
My last question, and then I'll let the other commissioners weigh in. The, the various grade levels are separated by, in many cases, a simple wall or a flight of stairs. How do you prevent co-mingling of upper grade students with lower grade students when they're in such close proximity? I have some personal experience. My daughter teaches in Beverly Hills, and they have these combined campuses, but they have much more space. And all of the administrative wing of the building is in the center, and the lower school is off on one side, and the upper school is off on the other side. So there's absolutely no contamination between the two groups. Yours seems to be, they're almost cohabitating the same area. Don't you see that as a p- a potential problem?
Um, so I think we completely reframe what you just said in this way. Controlled interaction of student groups is a good thing. And we see opportunity in mentoring and in controlled ways of having various generations have reasonable access to each other. The school facilities each contain administrative functions. So there are no fewer administrative functions within the fabric of the school than there are today. As Melinda commented about the use of the pool, we currently operate a seven through twelve school. Granted, that's not yet K through twelve, but the, the belief going into the seven through twelve configuration was that we would need to separate the seventh and eighth graders from the ninth through twelfth graders. So when Emory Secondary School, when the, when the Ralph Hollis site closed and the middle school students went to Emory Secondary School, there were partitions and locked doors structured in the school to physically create barriers so that the students couldn't deal with each other, couldn't, had no chance of interaction. That lasted for one year. There were no problems. In fact, we spent the next summer taking all of that down because it was, it was not needed. And I can tell you for sure that for the past several years in operating that school, those problems, the, the issues that exist are not issues of, of seventh and eighth graders having the opportunity to cross paths with ninth through twelfth graders.
Other commissioners have questions?
I noticed that you have on your chart showing grammar school classrooms being used by students during the school hour and by the community at other times. And generally, in grammar school, a student goes to the same room every day, has their own desk, uh, there's their own chart artwork, schedules whatever on the walls of the classroom. And yet now, other people will be coming in and using supposedly these small-scale desks and chairs. Doesn't that create some problems?
Yeah, I mean, we practically, we, we think that it's unlikely that the K through three level classrooms will be highly used outside of school hours by adults, for exactly the reasons that you're citing. I mean, the, the furnishings, everything about the space is not comfortable for, say, an adult school classroom. But grades four through six, I sit in those classrooms frequently, and there's nothing any different about them than any other classroom. So, so I, I agree with your point when it comes to the K through three sort of classrooms, especially K and one. So it, but we don't want to presume, we don't want to make it impossible for those rooms to be used, but, but practically speaking, it's unlikely that they will be unless, for some reason, the furniture is actually moved. But to a larger point, the issue that you raise has caused the school district to think about its teaching culture. And the challenge ahead of us in terms of thinking about teaching in this facility is to work with the teachers and the rec, uh, employees who, who will also be using those spaces, to think about, so why does a teacher need to own a classroom? What they, there are, they have very real needs. They have needs for security and preparation and materials. There are very real needs. But there are many schools in existence already that find other ways of accommodating those needs, leaving the actual nine hundred or a thousand or eleven hundred square foot classroom space available for other use during other parts of the day, week, and year. That's what we're trying to accomplish is-
I can understand that in a high school, where you have a student locker, and you put your books in the locker, because you go from classroom to classroom.
But for-
But these students stay in the same room for the entire semester, and they have their personal possessions in their desks.
And those can also be in locker-like environment. Not lockers in the sense that you're thinking of in corridors with, with combinations and, and noise, but there are classrooms in existence now where there's storage that accommodates the students and essentially their, their belongings, instead of stuffed in a desk, are put away so that others can come in and use the space.
If I could just add a comment. One of the ways we were able to shrink the original building plan somewhat was to take a look at our after-school program and how the kids in our program, and we, there are about eighty kids that come from Anna Yates that go to the city's after-school program, how we could share the spaces that the students will be using in their classrooms. And one of those ways would be to have the kids stay in their classrooms after school. Our leaders and program assistants would go into their classroom for the homework portion of the program, and there they would be, right with their, with their, uh, books and their, all their resource materials that they would need for that portion of our recreation program. And once the homework element was done, then we would bring them to another part of the building, where we would have game rooms and craft rooms and so forth. So that was really a, a good way to shrink the building a little bit, but still be able to utilize the classroom space more fully.
Okay. I have a few questions and comments. Firstly, I'm a strong supporter of joint use of facilities, and I'm so thrilled that Emory Unified and the city are moving in this direction. I think it presents more opportunities than problems. And I would suggest that, just for the benefit of the commission and the community at large as, as there's more outreach, to perhaps maybe put together a little report that identifies their examples all over the Bay Area, all over the country, on joint use projects and their successes, and how they work. And in addition, I think to also integrate into what Melinda was saying about what is going on now here in Emeryville with the sharing of spaces, so that the community understands that, that we're already doing that successfully. I understand that there are concerns about mixing kids in, in grade levels, particularly for the little ones, the kindergartners, but in the concept drawings that we were presented with this evening, I mean, there is a fence that showed around the little kindergarten area, and I think that's pretty standard. And I know Commissioner Martin also had some concerns about, you know, the kids, are they going to be segregated? Are they going to be safe? I think the design and with proper supervision, I mean, this is going to be a small campus. It's a, twelve hundred students, K through twelve, is a small number. And we have dedicated staff and faculty and community that I think will make sure that things go right. And I think it's also important for the community at large, when they have an opportunity to be on a school campus and see how the kids are doing and see what their tax dollars are going for, they become more engaged and more supportive with what's going on in the education, educational community. So I, I think it, it presents so many wonderful opportunities for the students and residents of the city. And I think that the challenges can be dealt with through proper supervision and design. So I'm, I'm really excited about the concept, and I'm looking forward to the selection of the architect and really getting into the design details. However, I do have some, some questions or concerns about some of the access and circulation issues, and it's a tight site. This is going to be an issue for this campus. And one of them, the first one, is just sort of dealing with the parking. And I see in the technical memo that Farr and Peers put together that they're suggesting, you know, the next stage with the additional studies. I'd like to recommend a couple of, of components to that. I'd like to see them go out and really survey what's going on at the high school campus now, when there's a game at Emory Secondary School, so we can understand how many people from the other school, parents and others, are coming, driving to that school, and understanding, do we really have a parking problem? Because that's probably going to be the peak time, where you're going to be really addressing some of the parking issues. Farr and Peers use the ITE standards. They tend to be overly conservative, and they're usually for suburban schools. And we have an urban school, and I think we should be encouraging people to walk where one point two miles square, take transit, an expanded Emory go-around, which we've already discussed in the general plan. So to the extent that we can, I would really like to see the parking go down, even though I know staff has some concerns about that. But I think we need to study this and, and see what we can do, and that could also go for faculty and staff. Maybe what we do to offset, parking spaces are expensive to construct. Maybe we offset a program where, um, staff and faculty are provided with free bus passes, something like that. So I think there are a lot of options, and it would be much less costly to provide everybody with a free bus pass than to put in an underground parking lot. Uh, so I'd really like for that to be explored in this next phase of the, the parking analysis. And then, um, on the, the map that was provided, the diagram that shows the parking summary, and it shows the layout on Forty-seventh Street, and I know this is just diagrammatic, but it looks to me like the drop-off area that's shown in this diagram is too close to the, to the corner, and that needs to be pulled back, so it might mean reducing the number of spaces along that drop-off on Forty-seventh Street. And a- another question I had, because I've, you know, the, the chaos occurs at the morning and then in the afternoon, so drop-off and pickup of the kids. And both Forty-seventh and Fifty-third Street are two ways. And I know what's going to happen with parents that are blasting on, particularly in the morning. If they're coming on San Pablo and they make a right onto Forty-seventh or Fifty-third Street, they're going to make a U-turn on that street and go back. And that's going to create a problem. So what we need to look at are ways, are should these, some of, should one or both of the streets be one-way, particularly, you know, Forty-seventh Street? You know, we need to look at that kind of things, because human nature is human nature. And when mom and dad are late and they're dropping the kids off on their way to work, they sometimes don't think about some of the safety issues when they're dropping their kids off. And that sort of leads me to my third comment, which is, those kids that are crossing the street, the pedestrian, the children and their parents that are walking and crossing the street to make sure that we don't have, or we minimize the conflicts between those drop-off areas and young people and adults that are crossing the street. So looking at ways that maybe we can, through distinctive pavement, lots of good signage, uh, to, to really designate areas that are pedestrian and that, um, vehicles, that drivers need to be more careful and alert, uh, when they're, when they're passing through those areas. I'm really excited about it. It's a great start. I can hardly wait to see the next phase. You're doing an outstanding job.
I may need to make some comments. I totally agree with what, what Patty was saying about the parking. That's probably one of my biggest concerns, is that this is an urban school, and I think we really need to emphasize that it is an urban school, and we need to work on our transportation. We also need to work on our safe routes to school. And I'd certainly like to have the vision of people walking their kids to school, or having a, a group leader walking kids to school and providing, uh, safe pedestrian access to the school. Safe pedestrian access on San Pablo is, is a real concern. That's pretty nightmarish, as it is right now. So I think that's something that needs to be addressed. Has, has to get quite a bit of attention in design details and how we make San Pablo Crossing safe. The other big thing for me, and Commissioner Martin kind of hit this in his email, is I know that AC Transit site is out of the picture for now, but with what we learned in our last general plan meeting, that the, uh, large park site that we had selected on the, along Hollis may not be the best choice. It may not, the site may not lend itself to that. I think that we really need to, um, put a focus on AC Transit site as a later phase. I think we should proceed with this as it's working now, but whatever we do in the design needs to look to the future and look to the AC Transit site for the, for our one large park in the city. For expanded, uh, sports facilities, I, I, to me, this is, is kind of cramped, that everybody's going to be using the same outdoor fields at the same time. And I think this is practical. I really like the efficiency of the whole site. I, I think, uh, it's really wise to reuse the site, but to me, it's really important that the city set its sights on the AC Transit. That's nine acres of, um, wonderful parkland, you know, wonderful sports facilities and a parking garage. And, um, and, and maybe we could do some sort of joint use of the parking garage prior to that. I, I really don't want to see the underground, the, the money spent on the underground parking. That's my comments.
Just for a little, a little bit of feedback, I mean, that we are pursuing exactly what you're suggesting. I mean, the, the, the investigations that are ongoing are all about how do we find shared parking opportunities? And we don't want to build the underground garage either. And then, uh, I, I should have said it right up at the front, but, um, the purpose for hiring the master planning architects was to test this site, see what we could do, and see what we might still need to find other solutions for. And the conclusions that I think the, the working group team has come to is that we can house the built program on this site, but it leaves us shy of two things: parking and open park and recreation space. And the possibility of finding that directly across Forty-seventh Street at AC Transit was very much part of the thinking of how this site might tie into an opportunity just like that, including the ways that the bike and- like that, including the ways that the bike and pedestrian paths may come through that site, the way that they might go on through this site and hook up to the whole general plan updates idea of the Fifty-third Street improvements. Those diagrams are very much in mind and, and alive in this.
No, I just also wanted to say thank you for all the, the work that, the great work that you've done, and the, the community meetings have been really great to get all the feedback. And I think you've really thought through the, the programming things to make everything work. So, thank you for that.
Is there anybody from the public that would like to speak to this subject?
Three, Mark, three minutes.
You have three, please keep your remarks to three minutes, please. Would you please give your name to the-
Yeah, my name is Daniel McWilliams. I'm here with my wife, Kim Carrata. We live at fifty-five Emery Bay Drive in the Emery Bay Village, which is adjacent to the school, school grounds. We'd like to officially record our opposition to the current plans for the Emeryville Center for Community Life. While we, while we support the Emeryville School District as they seek to provide students with a decent education in these very troubled economic times, we oppose the plan to combine our community center and other recreation facilities together with consolidated schools at the current location of the Emeryville Middle School on San Pablo Avenue. We oppose this for five reasons. One, it would create a traffic hazard at Fifty-third and San Pablo, where it is proposed that there be an extended zone to pick up and drop off students. The present zone is already a dangerous area, as drivers constantly make illegal U-turns off of San Pablo, onto Fifty-third, and back onto San Pablo. We have witnessed multiple near misses. Two, proposed additional parking along Forty-seventh Street between San Pablo and Doyle Streets of upwards of one hundred street spaces creates an injurious health hazard because of pollution from car exhaust and excessive noise that disrupts the home life of adjacent residents, many of whom have back doors and windows not twenty feet from the street. In addition, if part of the plan is to remove the median strip and the eucalyptus trees, it seems counter to current plans of Emeryville to create parks and green spaces around the city. Why would you start tearing down such existing sites? Three, our adjacent complex at Emery Bay Village becomes a natural place under this plan. For cars to come in seeking parking spaces, this is a private property driveway, and the spaces are for the tenants and our guests only. The plan as presently conceived is an open encouragement to trespassing. Number four, proposed operating hours for the center has been stated to include being open until ten PM or midnight. This is particularly egregious and injurious, because it creates a nighttime noise nuisance and is a health hazard, as it deprives the residents, the nearby residents, of the rest and recuperation they have enjoyed and rely upon. Five, finally, combination of a recreation center with consolidated school facilities in these troubled economic times is an unwise use of funds that would be better spent by concentrating strictly on helping our schools without combining them with a recreation center. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Can I present this letter to you folks?
Give it to the-
Here.
Is there a place for, for the gentleman to sign in?
Yeah, right over there on the-
Oh, yes, over there on the, sign your-
Is there anybody else that wishes to speak to this item? I'd like, I'd like to just make one final comment, if I may. First of all, I think the design is great, and obviously, I'm in support of the Emery Center for Community Life. I think the architects did a massive job of shoehorning into this site everything they need to get it in. But what I'm afraid of is, from an educational point of view, I only wish the site was about twenty-five percent bigger than it is now. And I think that you would then have a much more usable educational campus. But I guess we're going to have to live with what we got. With that, we'll close the public hearing. And are there any commissioners' comments on general matters?
Oh, I do have one, and I'll keep it brief. Charlie, I noticed today that on my end of Park Avenue, the, there have been signs posted on the trees that are being taken out on June fifteenth. And this is for the, presumably, we're finally going to get going on the undergrounding of Parks, the overhead wires from Hollis over to Halleck. And I was just wondering, at this point, why are the trees being taken out? And are we actually going to get in and start ripping up the street? And secondly, you know, since there have been issues with the removal of trees, and I know the Park Avenue plan is showing some beautiful landscaping, but I presume that we're going to get trees that are at, at, at least the same diameter, if not larger, that will be replacing the trees that are going to be taken out. Do you know about that? Or can you find out?
I, I can try to find out. I was informed by our Public Works Director, Maurice Kaufman, just this afternoon, that work on the Park Avenue Street improvements, which has finally been, you know, approved and bid and contracted out and everything, is due to begin early June, which would be in a week or so. And the first phase of that is going to be some improvements to storm drains under the Fortieth Street overpass, I guess for a connection of new storm drains. And then, the actual work on Park Avenue, which will involve tearing up the street and rebuilding it, will begin a few weeks later. So, within the next month, and the first, he informed me that the, it's going to start here at Hollis Street, between Hollis and Holden, and then work its way west towards the railroad tracks. I don't know the answer to, to your specific question about tree removal or size of replacement trees, but I can find that out for you.
Okay, that'd be great. Thank you.
Any other comments? If not, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? If not, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much.